I'll stand for the pledge, please. My allegiance, blue flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the zoning board of the Town and Village of Harrison for September the 8th, Thursday at 7:30. I hope all is well with everybody. We're gonna have fun tonight. Calendar item Z 22026, we have findings to approve?
No, to deny.
To deny. Anybody have any questions about the findings? No? Can I get a motion to approve as written?
I make a, I make a motion to deny.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
And accept the findings as written?
Yes.
Calendar item Z 20... Do you want to favor? All in favor?
Everybody's in favor, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody opposed? Calendar item Z 22024, West Chester Avenue Associates, they're looking for an extension for two years?
We're gonna grant this a two year.
Right. Can I get a, you wanna come up?
You don't need to hear from me.
No, you gotta earn your money. Can I get a motion to approve the request for the extension on Z 22024?
Make a motion to approve the extension on Z 22024.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
What'd you say?
Opposed.
Oh, you're entitled.
I was opposed last time, too.
Okay, Stephen, he don't like you.
I will take it personally.
It's a two year extension, not a two year.
Calendar item Z 22029, Allison Attenacio. Is somebody here on that case? Please come up and identify yourself.
Charles Attenacio. I am Allison's husband, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. She unfortunately had to make a business trip at the last second.
Sean Deluna. He's a general contractor.
Oh, just why are you here?
Chairman, members of the board.
Can you have a few photos here that in addition to the drawing of just the vicinity?
You were up against the house, then, right?
Correct. That is the existing pool house that we find ourselves here because the HVAC contractor went to get the permit for the work we're doing. There are existing two units with the house located in that area already. So we kinda didn't think that it would be an issue to put the new units back, in addition with a couple extra ones where the existing ones already were. Do you have this?
We should have them.
So if we get past that, I don't know if you need it. The highlighted... So that's when it was brought to our attention that it's within the setback line, which the existing structure is already there, probably before the code was a code. The procedure, filling out the variance application.
Is it possible to put it in a different location?
You look at the way that Justin has the house designed going to the far side, is where they did the addition, and the garage, the new one, goes to the right. There's a lot of impervious area between the house and the pool house that is kinda like a walkway. There were two old ones also right up against the house, but now there's a new window there.
Go on.
And that's where Justin had proposed to put all of them between the existing pool house and the big tree and the vegetation that's in front, kinda like screens all of them, and they wouldn't become an eyesore in the landscape.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody?
Don't quote me to anything, do you guys?
Oh, it does. I think everything else on the new work is within all the setbacks, and he did a good job designing the house to move around.
A window doesn't make any noise, but five air conditioning units do, and five within, half the allowable limit is served when you start it from scratch.
Well, the existing utilities were there. I know you're not starting completely from scratch, but we were, you know, trying to go back to where they were. That's the only reason why.
We have a problem giving three feet, three feet variances. This is 25 foot, 50 percent. I, I think it's unpalatable for you to spend that kinda money and miss the whole essence of the zoning code.
I'm only trying to do what the architect may be intended by putting them behind the existing structure. That's pretty sizable in length, and these guys are gonna take up just a corner. We can maybe move two or three of them. Could we put back the two? Because we run out of length along that garage. There's a mudroom door.
Call me crazy. It's a three-acre property?
Most of the property is to the front on this parcel.
There's a million, not a million, obviously conduits that can go underground, carrying the air conditioning lines or whatever, whatever the technical terms is, to make it more within code without, I can't imagine much cost at all compared to what you're doing now. I mean, you have, you have costs in setting it up now.
Well, we're at a point of waiting for this, before we move anything heavier or, you know, related to...
I know. Shouldn't have got to this point. The architect seems to have a habit of doing that, you know, and they time their, their requests accordingly.
If you could put it on any other part of the property, where could you?
They have to put it on it.
What?
They have to put it on another part of the property.
They don't have to.
It's a self-created cycle.
Get approved. Is there any other location where you could do it?
Can I approach the...
Yeah, sure, please.
We have, see where this line is right here? This is where the corner of the house meets within two and a half feet, that setback.
Right.
There's room here to put, like, three of the five. And like I said, there are two in that photo. You see the connection that we're on this back.
Why can't you put all five here?
You get close to that line, it's on an angle.
I see. So then it's more further into the setback.
Correct. Then it's, this is all setback area. This whole nice piece along, this becomes driveway and turnaround. This is an open area out to the pool. We kinda try not to stick these guys.
Did you speak to your neighbor? Did the neighbor have some objection to this?
When you face our house directly to the right, one of the complaints was filed by that individual, as well as one across the street.
One to the right, you're talking about if you're facing your house?
Yeah, so it's...
Somebody to the right?
Correct. Which has no impact at all on them. That being said, again, stating that the, the new units are in the same exact place as the old units, it has no impact on their visibility. We understand and appreciate the code that's, you know, that, that exists, but from the standpoint of the people that did complain, there's no impact on them, just sheer from the standpoint that they're in the same exact places.
What about the people behind you to that house?
The ones directly to our left, which actually would have...
Behind you to the left, you know?
Correct, yes. When you face our house to the left, they did, I did not speak with them, there was no...
I was talking about the ones behind with the red roof.
Correct, yes.
That's the problem.
There was no letter. There was just a letter from the people across the street and the gentleman next door, which is...
Across the street? Doesn't affect them at all?
No. My opinion.
Anybody else have any questions? Billy? Tom? Yep, Tom, Tom? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanna speak on this matter?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I did have one question. Go ahead. I just wanna be clear. So the neighbor, if I'm looking at the property this way?
Come on closer?
Yes, please. The neighbor here who is most affected?
If you don't mind, let me just grasp, make sure that... Correct. So this, these people, again, those units are, are directly right here. These, this family did not say anything. It was this house and this house. Oh, I'm sorry. This house and this house.
But the ones who would be most affected didn't express either support or opposition?
I, I can't, I didn't check the card. They definitely did not make a complaint.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like this? We'll see, we'll listen to it. We will give you, you'll get an idea later of what direction...
I'll review the photos, too.
Thank you, guys.
You want this back?
This one yours? No.
Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Calendar item Z 2203 Oregirio Lobo. One Woodside Road.
Good evening. Michael Cardosa with Greenwich Power Systems, we're the contractor on this. So we're looking for a variance for this, to put a generator on the side of the garage, which would coexist with the other mechanical equipment. The AC units there, the gas meters there, the electric meters there. It's all there, it's the easiest way to, just to put it and cover everything.
And you're only requiring a 2.1-foot variance?
Yeah.
That's the right side of the house looking at it.
If you're, yeah, if you're looking from, was it Woodside Lane? So it's the right side of the garage, you go up the drive, which is on the right. And actually, if you go to the, the boundary of the property, all of that is covered with hets. So it's not even something you'd see.
Anybody have any questions? No.
What size generator is it?
It's an air-cooled 24 KW. They're four foot by, two inches by 25 inches.
And it has no impact on anybody?
No.
Is it okay? Either way, it's, it abuts the street, not a neighbor's property.
I'm sorry.
In either direction.
Here.
Yeah.
It's the street, not a neighbor property.
No, no, that's the street, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this? Have a seat, and you'll hear what we have to say later. Thank you. Calendar item Z 22031, Jose Orierio. Can I get a motion for, for an adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not two weeks, right? One month?
No, not two weeks.
Calendar item Z 22032, Gloria Frenell and Allison Ganassi.
Hello, Stephen. Um, we're here, excuse me. We originally got a pool for the pool...
Tell us who you are.
Steve Marcusani, the architect for the applicant. We originally got a variance for a pool last November. While we were filing for commiss and what have you, the original pool company that was gonna do the job couldn't do it. So we went to another pool company, and they didn't have the exact same sized pools, a foot wider. So I went to the building department to find out what the procedure is, if the variance still held or whatever. And then it was determined that we, the original approval was based on the wrong zone.
Right, I got it.
Zone district. It was R 75, which I thought it was. Building department didn't pick it up until after the fact.
Right.
So now we're back to where it's an R a third. So the front setback requirement for accessory is 75 feet, and we have 50 feet. And the R 75 was 60 feet, we still have the same 50 feet. Pool itself didn't change the location or anything, it was just the zoning district numbers changed. We did move the pool equipment to the, closer to the house, so it's away from the neighbors even farther than originally. And the rear yard setback is 20 feet, and we have 15 feet.
Swimming pool's already established, right?
Yeah, it's from, it's in the same place we originally approved it.
Existing, is my point. It's existing.
No, the pool's not existing.
So if we proved it, we were proving something that was a mistake to begin with. We haven't had any expense up to now, right? Except for architectural fees, stuff like that. We don't necessarily have to approve it because, can you, can you do it in a way in conforming manner?
No, because the, because it's a corner lot, we have two fronts, so it limits us to that back corner, and the lot is only approximately 95 feet deep at that point. So a 75-foot front and 25-foot back is 100, there's no way to make it totally conform.
Well, partially conform?
That's about as close as we can get to conform.
Well, I think when we considered that last time.
Right.
We approved it because it wasn't as much we were paying attention to the, the zoning, the R, R 75, whatever. It was the, it was the, the way it fit into the property.
Right.
And that didn't change.
Because the left side is, is a hill, so you really can't go...
Well, we weren't advised of it, it was the fact that there's a daycare.
So is the, is the only change, physically speaking, the pool is slightly larger?
It's a foot wider, but it's closer to the house, a foot that way.
The foot is clo, okay.
So the fact is, it's a zoning issue. All right. Anybody else? Is that it?
Yep.
Anybody else wanna speak on this matter? Thank you, Stephen.
Has it ever revealed that there's a daycare center going on there in the first presentation?
No, at the time I didn't know that. It, it just started a year before. I have a license too, if you wanna copy it.
Thank you, Stephen. Calendar item Z 22033, Ronaldo Royzenvit. Did I pronounce that right? Did I pronounce that right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Paul Moto, how are you? Nice to see you again. Thank you. I represent Reynaldo and Adriana Royzenvit, who reside at 12 Flagler Drive in an R1 zoning district. As we laid, set forth in the application, they are looking for a 20-foot, foot, 24-foot variance for a terrace and exterior stairwell that is within 26 feet of the edge of a pond. Obviously, I think you're familiar with this area, that pond, yes, I know.
Anybody else is here to complain about this?
Well, we don't know yet. You haven't, you haven't opened it up for discussion yet, but...
Is it, is it a legal water?
Well, it's a, it is a legal man-made water body. Yes, but we're not, don't need to get into that. It still, still applies under the zoning code. When they bought the property in 2019, it had an existing terrace that also encroached on 50-foot setback. And I submitted some photographs that show the previous property with a survey. In 2020, they submitted plans to do a renovation and add a small addition, which included the exterior stairs and the addition to the terrace that hold the stairs together. That was approved by the BAR. They obviously got building permits, they went through the process, there were numerous inspections, it was essentially completed. And then, I suspect, maybe related to some of the other applications, but building department said, you know, before, we can't grant you CO until you get a variance. We see now that you are within the 50-foot setback for the water body. So now we are here for, seeking a variance, an area variance for the 24 feet for that addition that has already been completed. Bob Keller, our architect, is here with boards to show you. If you need, if you'd like to see them, he can take you through it. It's not a substantial variance. It's already been extended, and the original terrace was, which the house had a CO. It will not produce any change in the character of the neighborhood. We really don't have an alternative because the stairs provide a vital safety function as well as, you know, part of the back of the house. And there will be zero adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood.
Who controls the water on that, the, the pond?
It's basically the town.
The town does?
Yeah, we, there are two ponds, one small pond and one large pond. So the water flows from the river and from the rain, and it's flowing down to the stream.
So if you built, if you built the shoreline of the pond, about 20 feet into the water, you'd be compliant?
I don't think you could do that. Yeah. We don't wanna ask the DEC if we can do that.
Can't fill that in?
No.
That's why I asked who is the controller on that.
I don't think there's actually a controller. I mean, because, you know, it's basically women...
It's man-made, it can be man-made.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm not for the discussion.
Those are artificial ponds, correct? Those are man-made, are...
Those are man-made ponds, yeah.
Those have been there for many, many years.
Speaking of, last year at this time, specifically September 2nd, 2021, when we had the deluge, how high was the water level near your house compared to? How, how higher did it go because of the rain?
So the thing is that these are two ponds, one is higher than the other one, so it flows down, this is slow, right? So the smaller pond, which is the one that fills up, has a drain that connects to the other pond. So actually, it never flows.
Didn't flood?
You were, okay. You were not impacted by that?
No. And the house is on a kind of a hill, so...
Just wanna make sure. You're not putting up any fences, though?
No. Absolutely not.
We were planning to refer to existing one, but then we decided not to do it.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Turtle accessory-free, right?
I would like to point out, the variance for the 24th feet is at the very tip of the staircase. Most of the staircase is 40 to 45 feet away from the prime of the pond.
We were there. And we were all there. And we should be there, anyway.
Yeah, somebody was...
You wouldn't know the answer to my, my position. You can't, you can't fill that in to your, to your needs. Wouldn't change the...
Look at it, yes, I mean...
Wouldn't change the water level.
No, but...
Because we're just...
Could create other environmental issues, though.
I don't know.
Anything further?
No, sir, we, that completes our presentation.
Any other questions from anybody?
You feel mosquitoes?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Are you going to close the hearing, or are you going to keep...
Finish up with the other...
You gotta suffer with everything.
Thank you.
We'd love to get you out of here early.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Good seeing you.
Calendar item Z, anybody wish to speak on this matter? Nobody wants to speak on this matter? Okay. Calendar item Z 22034, Gino and Maria Petrini. Hello, Stephen.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg and Stout, here on behalf of Gino and Maria Petrini, who own the property known as 19 New Street under 19 New Street LLC. Also with me tonight is Joseph Craco, our architect. So the property, as I'm sure you recall, is improved with an existing two-family house, which is a legal non-conforming use on the site. It was constructed in 1930, significantly predating current zoning. The properties in the R 51 family zoning district were the minimum lot area, is about 5,000 square feet, and our property is a little over double that size. The existing house on the property is well undersized for the lot, and so what Gino and Maria are hoping to do is expand the house and therefore expand the size of the existing two-family use. So the variance we're seeking today, excuse me, is for the expansion of an existing non-conforming use. Now, you may recall, they were back in front of you, I think in June, with an alternate proposal for this expansion. And the proposal at that time was to keep the two-family use, but make it larger, changing the one-bedroom units to three bedrooms, and to put six onsite parking spaces on the property.
How many units? Three units you're looking for?
Same number of units. No change in number of units.
But you know, use variance is difficult to get.
So this has actually been determined to be an area variance by the building inspector. Because the use exists, it's an expansion of the area of the use. That's how they made their determination. So the feeling of the board at that time was that the proposed building was too substantial. And you may also recall that a second variance was needed at that time because the building was extended so far back, it went beyond 85 feet from the New Street property line, which is prohibited under the zoning ordinance. Right. And there's a provision of zoning that says you can't be more than 85 feet from the front lot line, so a second variance was needed at that time. They went back to the drawing board, and they decided, they wanted to be responsive to your comments that the feeling was too substantial, so they revised the drawings, which Joe can walk you through in a minute, the details of what's proposed. They shrunk the scope of the proposed expansion. Instead of three-bedroom units, they've shrunk it down to two-bedroom units. The building that's been designed is fully compliant with the zoning ordinance, so what you're looking at here could be constructed as a conforming single-family home that could easily have four or five bedrooms. But even though they've reduced the size, even though they've reduced the bedroom count, they're still keeping the extra parking spaces that were previously proposed, so it's still six onsite parking spaces, which is, again, still above the four required by code.
I didn't see the access to the parking spaces.
Joe, could you point that out?
It doesn't exist yet. Right now, there's one parking space here, it's kinda hanging into the right lane, getting constructed, the driveway, which is parking area in the rear.
Is that the property line, right, conflicting with that? If you're gonna have setbacks for that?
No, there'll be a, a 12-foot drive and a...
Oh, really?
Yeah, the drive has to be 12 feet, and we have enough distance to the property on our, on our property.
Stephen? Stephen, I just wanna be clear. This is legally non-conforming before anything gets done.
Correct.
You're increasing the non-conformity. What is non-conforming about the existing structure? Is it just the front yard setback?
It's, it's the use. It's the two-family use. It's a two-family building in a district that doesn't permit it. And it's, which is, as it happens, actually fairly common for this particular block. There's, I think, four other two-family houses in the neighborhood.
We've had them here before. New Street, the front yard, too.
Can you walk through the changes between the prior plan in June and this plan here?
Okay. In order to get the second variance eliminated, we shrunk the building structure in total to 12 feet. We brought the back of the building...
So, so the gishing is 12 feet shorter than it were back in June?
Yes, yes. Just, I wanna point out one of the things that is on the existing, that we're also involving an old garage. Yeah. That's closer to the property line, it's not in good shape. And, you know, this is the area where the parking was done, but, you know, we're also pulling the structure closer to the...
The design will be much nicer than it is now.
That is absolutely the intention.
And, and the apartments will be two, two-bedroom apartments rather than three-bedroom?
Yes.
How many of them are there?
Excuse me?
How many apartments?
Two. There's two now, and we're just increasing the size of the two.
So each, each unit would get one more bedroom than currently exists?
I was wondering whether or not there's an objection by any neighbors for having six cars lined up. Looks like a commercial lot.
So if...
I had no idea, I mean...
I, I believe the conversation that occurred back in June was that the, the neighbors were concerned about adding cars, and the board's feeling at that time was that the parking was acceptable, and the feeling was that having extra available off-site parking was a benefit because it takes cars off the street. Now, we don't have to have six by code, the feeling with the additional two parking spaces. Remember, only two per unit is required, meaning a four parking space is, area is required. The feeling on our end was that the less potential impact to on-street parking, the better the design was. But certainly, we'd be happy to hear from the public as, as the hearing is open.
Because that was my concern, it almost looks like a commercial lot.
We're buckling to all three sides. The house screams the majority of the portion of pace at the front, and the parking is over 100 feet from the front lot. It's way...
No, 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 I wasn't concerned about that. The, the house to the left, looking at the front... The, the house to the left, looking at the front, has, has a big living area back near the parking area.
Right, right next to the parking.
Right next to the parking lot. Yeah, parking, mischaracterized the parking spaces, which takes on a characteristic of a parking lot, when you have six cars later in there.
We reduce it to four.
No, I mean, there may be another accommodation. I'm just bringing that subject up.
Yeah.
But we intend to landscape all the way around the park.
We'll hear from the objectors.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and just so, so the existing building is 32.5 by 22.4, right? And you're basically, the gishing is going to be 32.5 by 4.2, is that?
No, the original building was 36. We're cutting into that, we're reducing that, so the total building, we're cutting the existing structure a couple of feet, and then we're pulling the other structure closer to it.
Oh, I see that. Portion of existing structure to be removed. Okay, I think you, okay. So that's how you cut it back.
Yep. Plus, we reduce, reduce the size of all of this and eliminate.
Guy's house, that's right here.
Anything further? Anybody else have any questions?
Just a clarification. Is the side yard correct in the chart, or is the side yard correct on the, the site plan?
I don't think it is correct.
It's seven, um, two feet in the chart as existing.
Spaces there.
In, in order not to keep a complete straight wall on the, on the property line, the building steps out a bit just to create a way to go a little bit closer to the property line, but we're still well within the setback.
Okay.
So the chart is right, and the matter is right.
He's right, he's right of the property line.
The seven four is in front of the.
And the six, the 6.2, that's six foot seven and a quarter, no?
So it's six inches, but it's long downstairs.
Yeah.
That might be a tight one.
Okay.
I just, I just have a question with the parking. You, you did not need a garage? Is that, is that?
No.
Okay. I was only impressed with me a garage, where you do a driveway, but.
I was hoping to put air parking in that area.
Looks like an improvement to me. Any bill? No? Anybody else want to have any questions? Okay, Stephen.
If anything comes up, we can always answer.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter?
Yes.
You gotta come up here. You gotta expose yourself to public scrutiny. Tell us how you feel. Tell us how you really feel.
My name is Rosemarie Giordano. We're directly next door to this home.
Which side?
Well, if you're facing the house, we're on the left of the, of them. And our backyard will be impacted, obvious, by the extension of the building. First of all, they haven't mentioned, uh, what's the size of the building going to be? If it's 1,300 square feet now, what is it going to be later? We'd like to know that. Also, what the setbacks are, and, as you said, the driveway will be directly on our, are we going to be looking at the, at the, at the cars? And right now, they cut all the trees down. There's no privacy whatsoever on both sides. The neighbor, the other neighbor has the same thing. And is there going to be air-conditioning units to this new addition and the old addition? I know it's an old home, I get that. And the, the garage has never been used. As far as we know, nobody has ever put in anything but storage in this garage, because it's an old, and a car couldn't fit in there, because it's so close to the back of the house. So that garage, it was just there because it was there. It might have been just a storage unit at one time. But anyway, that would be our concern, because that directly affects us. Also, the water, there's some kind of water going on there also, right? And as far as we know, there is also, at the very end of our driveway, which is adjacent to theirs, to their property line, there is a manhole that needs to be taken care of. So we're concerned about that, because we asked for somebody to come and take a look, and so far, nothing has been done.
You know anything about that?
What about the manhole? There's a manhole. Every time we get a big rain, it backs up into our driveway. We called, they came to look, but nobody's done. John called, yeah.
We got engineer.
Well, we're, he knows more than I do about that.
Can I just come up and look? Yeah. Did you try calling engineering?
I didn't call engineering, no. But we did, John, what did, who did you call? I'm not sure.
I spoke to Ally.
Okay, so.
Tell us who, tell us who you are.
All right, my name's John Biscay. I live in the house across the street from the house. A question. To answer her question, I spoke to Ally. Ally spoke to the engineer. There is a drain, like, right on the corner of the property, that backs up every time it rains. They came out, looked at it, said it doesn't belong to the town. So now, we have no idea who this, who this drain belongs to, but it's.
Somebody put it in illegally.
By whom? Who would have been? We've been there since, what, 1970? And it was there? So I don't know.
So obviously, somebody put it in illegally, and they'll have to do a trace on it, but the town won't do it, because it's not their responsibility. They're not going to pay for someone to come out and to trace the pipe.
Okay.
So how do we take care of it then?
Can you get somebody to, to do a survey on this?
We can certainly look into it, see if it's on this property.
It's right on the property line, that we know.
Is this?
We'll get somebody to take care of it.
This drain, is this a, like a dry well? That's been put over there?
Years ago, was it?
It's piped, it's piped into a catch basin located between 21 and 23 New Street. The pipe goes out, it's thin-walled, six-inch PVC. It's going, somebody put it in years ago. But.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, there used to be wells years ago. And then the water line came in, so why would, that's been picked up when the water was?
I believe it's piped into that basin, but I think it's just plugged up.
Because it doesn't belong to the town. They wouldn't touch something that doesn't belong to the town.
How could it be, though? It's right on the road. It's not on the property line, it's on the road. Yeah. And it wasn't picked up, I guess, when we bought the house?
Can they look into it?
Just so you know, we're here to make, you guys, we're here to protect the neighbors.
Steve, hold on.
From any abuses that contractor may have. So you, you're right.
Yeah, before we do anything, I'd like to know.
Air conditioning condensers, generator, you know, you don't know. It's right up against your window. It's a narrow property.
How we, how we want to.
Too many people at one time. Hold it, hold. Too many people at one time.
Right.
Finish, finish what you said.
Oh, no. But our concern would be, as I said, there's no buffer whatsoever. Is there going to be air conditioning? Is it going to be trees pulled back up, because they weren't allowed to cut, which is right. They got the permit to cut all the trees. We have no, but there's nothing left, not there. So everything is exposed, and it's noisy.
Or generated.
Whether it's going to be new air-conditioning units put in.
Give you a chance to respond.
We'd like to know that, you know. I mean, they have a right to put it in. I'm not saying not putting it in. It just depends where, how it's going to affect everyone else around it. You know? So that would be our concern. And as I said, I didn't hear what the size of the house would be. We would like to know that. And it would be a duplex. I think that's what they're coming in, unless they changed it, because at the beginning, it was a duplex that they wanted to put in.
It's basically a small duplex.
So, I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to see one thing.
It appears to be like 3,000 square feet.
Excuse me?
It's about 3,000 square feet. They're doubling the house.
22 and a half, 32 and a half. Still doubling the size of the house.
Oh, yeah. It's a big house.
I'm sure you folks saw me in June.
Well, thank you.
I'm just, I'm going to keep the conversation brief.
So opposed to it.
Thank you, sir.
Not with the neighborhood at all.
Two-family houses, not, not good for.
They could do a whole bunch of other things. They can knock the house down and put it back to a single-family house, which is what the street is zoned. Or they could put an addition on the existing house. They're basically putting two houses together and calling it an addition. I don't get it. And that was my argument back in June. You're basically taking, you're building a second house and butting it up against the first one.
No.
Yeah. That's what they're doing. There's going to be no egress, there's going to be no egress between the two units.
Let him respond. Let him respond. Okay, thank you. Steve, you want to respond to some of these things?
You should, so just before we do that, whatever process you prefer, if you want to question, answer, if you want to make sure all the public gets to the street first, however you'd like to run the meeting, Mr. Chair.
Does anybody else have anything they want to say on this matter?
Yeah.
Well, let them come up. I'll let them speak first. Maybe we'll pick up a whole list of them.
Hi, I live on 34 New Street. I've been on this street for 25 years. He really should emphasize, which he omitted, there's only parking on one side of the street. We really should keep that in mind. It's a big deal. I've come home, I, I've had to park in the cobblestone overnight. I've had to park in the firehouse overnight. I've called the police department. How do we know? When there's a big snowstorm and there's five cars that have snow on them for a week? You say, wow, those people don't live here. So I have to call the police department? Yep, that's someone who's probably got a ride to the airport, someone who's working for Pepsi or at SUNY Purchase. The workers from the Trotteria park on my street, all the workers, because they want to reserve the space for their customers. I watch them every day walk over to both restaurants, because they park on the street. It's so annoying, but that's still going to be a two-family house. So we had two old gentlemen living there before. One, I don't even think had a car. No one had a problem. I think that it's the ugliest house I've ever seen, so it's going to be very welcome, whatever they do with it. Everyone's going to be happy, seeing a new facade, whatever you do, it's going to be, I'm sure it's going to be 100%, everyone's going to be happy with it. But to make it bigger is the problem. It shouldn't be any bigger, because you're going to have more people in there. And if it's still zoned a two-family, I, I grew up with seven kids in my family. Once you get teenagers, they're all going to have cars. Going to have more cars on the front, on that street, which, that's the problem. More cars, we, and, this is also a perfect example of them investing in a house, making it bigger. This is a great investment for, for them. It's, it's going to make the money at the expense of the neighbors. Their house is going to be worth less. They're going to be looking out the window at, what, a parking lot? You made a great point. It's going to be a commercial on the street, six parking spaces? It's, it's ridiculous. So let them keep their footprint. The footprint that they're allowed to have, get creative. No one has a problem with that. It's making it bigger. If you make it bigger, you can pack more people in there, and that's the problem. 30, I'm 34, so I think it's 36, 37 New Street. I had to call the police because there's mother-daughter setups. My, my neighbors, they, they moved, they, they were renting their basement, and the police department had to put a, had a post eviction notice on an illegal apartment in the basement? It's, it's, it's great to have, you know, people renting illegally on the street. So, yes, let them keep his, let them get creative. He's got the zoning. I was there when we rezoned the, the street the first time. And now, we have rules, and, you know, maybe it's only 13 feet. They're asking for a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more. We've already rezoned the street. They, they, you know, but yeah, it's going to be a two-family. So when you have a two-family, you know, you have 10 people in the house, and no more parking. It's already, it's already a nightmare. But that's, that's, but I, I, I think that's, you made a good point. This is, what is this, commercial? Yeah? This is really not fair. You know, they, they, they knew what they bought when they bought the house.
You know where my going rate is?
No, you, you brought up some very good points. It's, it's a house that should have never have been built. And that's great. They, they want to get creative with the property there, but not make it bigger. It doesn't, you know, but it is at their expense. And I'm down the street, so it's not, not really going to affect me, but I could, I will follow up with this. I've spoke to at least nine homeowners on the street. Not one of them is for it, for making it any bigger. And I can, and if you want to reconvene, I will get signatures for everyone on the street. You asked, you know, about, are the neighbors happy? How do the neighbors feel about it? You asked. There's not one person on the street that's, that'll be happy with that footprint being bigger. But they will all be happy with a newer house. So that, that's the positive. But the negative is, it shouldn't be any bigger than what is allowed.
Well, it's a kind of big.
Thank you. That's it.
Gentlemen.
Anybody else like to speak on this matter?
They're right.
You want to say something?
They're all right.
I'd like you to, I'd like you to talk about plantings, screening, stuff like that. Took out all the trees, what are you putting in?
So, we actually showed the landscaping on the plans, and Joe, maybe if you want to bring that up, so.
Young lady took.
Sorry, would it be easier if I held it up for you, Joe?
No.
Okay. So, Joe, for reference, the first member of the public who spoke, I believe, is at 17 New Street?
Well, we live, I live at 17 New Street. And we come up and see the plans because I mean.
Of course.
I'd like you to come up and identify yourself. Why don't you wait till they're done with this section? Just wait.
So 17 New Street.
It's this building here. And what we're showing, so as you can see, actually, the garage that was referenced in our comments is here, that's being removed.
The addition that's being put onto the existing house doesn't even come quite as far back as the existing garage, in order to get as close to the property line as the existing garage. The other thing to note, Joe, if you wouldn't mind flipping back just quickly, we are landscaping. We, we are proposing plantings. These are Arbiviti, and then, Joe, do you want to speak to just what the additional ...
We haven't selected, but they can be an arboretum. They can be additional Arbiviti's, like pines, whatever. We can come up with a lot.
So, we want to make sure that the addition and the parking are screened along the property line. And with regard to the parking, you know, I, I think we're hearing two different concerns. One is the visual, and then one is, there's not enough parking on the street. People are parking on the street who can't park on their property, or who don't live in the neighborhood. Right now, there is no parking on this property, zero. Technically, four spaces are required, but again, it's an old house built in nineteen thirty. So to say it's a house that never should have been built, I mean, it predates the current zoning ordinance by...
But you don't need parking. You drive in a backyard and park your car, leave the car there.
Well, the zoning ordinance would tell you that two spaces per dwelling unit are required, so a total of four.
Two fit in the backyard, it's all right.
Two, but four would be required.
Well, that's what four costs.
So that is essentially where we're putting the parking. Now, my, the, the point I'd like to make, if the concern is that six is too many, I confirmed with my client, we'd be happy to reduce it down to the minimum of, of four. Our intention was to pull cars off the street to address that concern of not enough parking in the neighborhood. We thought this would be a benefit, having two additional parking spaces, but we're happy to lose those, and certainly that would increase, you know, the purview of the site as well. The other note I wanted to make is, we keep hearing that we shouldn't be allowed to build a house beyond the footprint that's permitted. And I don't know if, maybe there's perhaps a misunderstanding, what we've proposed here is, from all bulk and dimensional requirements, entirely permitted under the zoning ordinance. If this were a single-family house with five bedrooms, maybe more, I don't know how much you could fit in there if you got rid of the second kitchen, we could build that as a right without site plan approval or variance. The issue is that it's a two-family house, and we're expanding the area of that use. So, I, I want to be clear, the size of the house, the visual impacts, the proximity to the neighbors, all of that's permitted by the zoning ordinance. It's just a question of what type of use is contained inside of it. One family is permitted under zoning, two families is what exists now. It's what exists on five total properties in this neighborhood. So...
Are those two families or those mother-daughter units?
They're two separate one-bedroom units. And we heard the concerns...
Here, but not all the others?
Not all the...
I'm talking about the other, the other houses on the street. They're mother-daughter, right? They're not two?
No, they're all, they go two families. We pull all, I have all...
They're, they're all taxed and recorded as two families, and that's at sixteen, seventeen, twenty, and twenty-two New Street.
And they're all being used as two-family houses?
That's what, as best we know, based on the tax...
Yeah. And then, just because I know this is personal for my clients, you know, to hear that they should have done their due diligence, they did reach out to the building department before purchasing the house. I'm told that, they were told verbally, albeit not in writing, that they would be allowed to expand the use so long as it conformed with the dimensional regulations. So, I, I do think they did purchase in good faith, and, and they were looking to move forward in good faith. As, as to the drain, we did submit a signed and sealed survey of the property.
Recent.
Recent, that's right. It did not pick up the drain anywhere. We can certainly look into it, but our licensed surveyor did not locate a drain on nineteen New Street's property.
Have them come back.
Sure, we, I, I'm sure we can have them look into it to clarify.
Is there or not there?
Exactly.
You're going to let them know?
I'm not sure if there's anything I can do, because if it's not...
Well, you have an engineering department, right?
Engineering department's already been contacted, and they said it's not the town's. So they won't investigate something that doesn't belong to the town.
Even if it presents a danger?
Somebody said that the drain goes from the, at the corner of seventeen New Street...
Steve, let us know.
All the way to...
Identify, identify yourself, please.
Grace, Grace, just on the seventeen New Street. So, I've experienced when it rains really, really heavy, there's a foot of water that just doesn't drain, so you can't even go across the driveway. And the last, somebody from the town did come over to take a look at it. They were trying to clean it up, and then the machine broke, and they came three weeks later to do it again. And then, nobody ever told, got back to me to, to say that they did anything with it.
That the gentleman said that Ally told him it didn't belong to the town. So you're telling me that the town did work on something that didn't belong to them?
They came over to look at it. So, whatever they told John, it was after their machine broke. So, I don't know, because nobody ever got back to me. I was the one that called the town to begin with, I think even before John, to complain of the water.
What if the applicant had some engineering person come in and take a look at it?
Could you be a little clearer where it is?
It's right at the driveway.
Seventeen and yours? Is it in the street?
Yes, at the street.
Oh, it's in the street?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not on our property?
No, it's right at the street, at the very corner.
I, I think that answers the question. Here's the setback line. This is our property line. If it's at the street, it would be off of property.
Okay.
It's right at the very corner.
All, all I can promise you, as far as drainage, it's very, it's possible to retain all our stormwater on our property. And whatever the code requires, state, county, and local, we will comply with, and we will contain the existing, which we wouldn't necessarily have to do. So we will go way over the box, above with the drainage, as not to cause any further problems. I don't know if we can fix what exists, but...
My concern is more about the parking lot and the fact of the house, because it's really going to create an environmental change. Right now, like, there's grass.
It's what?
Grass.
Okay.
You know, on our back, their back. If it becomes a paved road where cars have to park, just the fumes, you can't even sit outside anymore.
So, so, let's just let the public finish there.
So, I, that's my opinion. And then, also, if the house goes all the way back, because our house is set further back than theirs, so is their house going to be even with ours? And then, the windows are going to be really, like, five feet apart. So if there is any kind of...
Your house is not clear of our issue. This is your house.
So is your house, the new house going as far back as the garage?
It does not...
No, not as far back as the...
As the existing.
Your view will be untrue.
No, I'm to understand, that's what I want to know.
Can I, can I do, can I do this? Can I do this? Would you do me a favor?
Of course.
Take them into the lobby with the people, show them the plan, all right?
Sure.
And let them see the plan, and explain every aspect of the plan to the individual. We're the zoning board, we know what's going on there, but they don't. You may find allies among them, so just do me a favor. We'll take, take a little break, go out into the lobby, discuss it with them, and we'll go to the next case.
Sure.
And you can come in and finish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Steve.
Seventeen, seventeen, and the... Is that from a, a, a tour?
Whoever has a concern about this property, please go with them. Express your concerns to them, and let them see if they can address them. And then you'll come back in.
I think you ought to join.
How does that, I've got a good idea?
Yeah. Yeah.
Get back to Rockford. Hey, you should.
We start doing it on a screen outside.
Brock the loaders.
All right, tell them the item, Z twenty-two oh thirty-five Elk Holmes, four oh two Hallstate Avenue.
I love it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Null. I'm a partner at the firm of Cuddy and Fader. To my left is Rex Gedney, who's architect with Crozier Gedney, and behind me is Gary Hirsch, principal of, of the Elk Holmes LLC entity that's acquiring the property and proposing this thirty-one unit building. As you know from the application, we're proposing on almost two, two-thirds of an acre of property, a thirty-one unit building where the, there is now a Chase Bank. And we're going to conform in all regards with respect to the ordinance, coverage, setbacks, et cetera. We're acquiring about sixty-two hundred twenty-four square feet of a portion of land that's behind the property, and that is about twenty-five feet wide, and runs from the back of our property to the railroad property and the slope that's there. The application that we submitted would involve nine one, nine one-bedroom units, including three one-bedroom units that are affordable units, workforce housing, and fourteen two-bedroom units, as well as three, eight three-bedroom units. These are very high-end units, amenitized considerably, both with regard to tenant amenities themselves, and with regard to having a powder room, high-quality kitchen appliance with fine appliances and finishes, including, for instance, five-inch-wide white oak flooring. Many of the, eight of the apartments will be appointed with working fireplaces.
Is it rental?
It's a rental building, yes. As part of the amenities, there's significant tenant amenities space, both on the first floor, consisting of a fitness center, bike storage, and pet spa, as well as outdoor amenities space of eleven hundred square feet. The balance of the amenities space is indoor, but also there's outdoor terrace amenities space on the roof, and there are balconies as well. So when we go through calculating what the open space is that's being provided, as you know, your ordinance limits the extent to which you can count balconies and rooftop space to no more than fifty percent of that area. And while we're providing sixty-four hundred square feet of amenities space, I'm sorry, of, of open space where we need sixty-two hundred square feet, more than fifty percent of the proposed space to be counted are the rooftops and, and balcony spaces. Similar variances, as you know from what we submitted and from your own experience, have been granted for playhouse lofts and woodworks, as laid out in, in the application. And that includes height and, and open space. We're also asking for variance for two parking spaces. Now, this one is a little bit curious, because we're providing forty, and, but some of them, nine of them, are tandem spaces that are proposed to be used by residents that would occupy an apartment and have two vehicles. So they'd be assigned spaces, and this has worked very successfully in many other developments throughout the region. Somebody, for instance, who's a couple that has a two-bedroom unit and has two cars, they just, one parks closest to the building, the other one parks behind, and it works out fine. But because it doesn't have a twenty-five-foot aisle, that design of tandem spaces doesn't conform to the zoning ordinance, and accordingly requires the variance. So, the, the two spaces that are identified as needing, as needing the variance are these at the back corner here, the, the northwest corner, which have less than twenty-five feet from the back of the space. The orange highlighted is twenty, is a twenty-five-foot distance, and these are the nine spaces that I mentioned as tandem. So, altogether, we'll have space for more cars than the twenty-nine that are required by the ordinance. But we're asking for variance so that these spaces can be counted, because they don't have, even though they don't have a twenty-five-foot aisle, one of these two spaces can be accommodated where they have less than twenty-five feet to back up, while other spaces conform. The other variance that we're asking for is to have the additional height of the building itself.
Do you have the fire inspector pass on it? For, for the, the eastern side of the house?
I, I believe we're okay with the fire department.
We, we did have a conversation early on with the building department and fire department.
Because we've had issues with the fire department access along the railroad tracks here. Couldn't get a ladder behind the, between tracks in the house.
We have twenty-five feet.
How about this side, though? The side, the side adjacent to the...
This is a twelve-foot driveway, which, my understanding is...
On the other side, the other side, yeah.
And this is a, this is a parking lot for Newport...
The other house. Yeah, you have to get any kind of right-of-way, or, I think you do.
Well, we, we have this right-of-way now.
Not that one. In the book.
On this side.
Yeah, so fire trucks can...
I'm going to ask John Canning, who's our traffic engineer with Kim Lee Horn, to address that, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, John Canning, the state building code and fire code requires that you have a fire-access road along the entire length of one side of a building.
Of one side?
Yes.
And the other people burn.
I don't write the code, but that's, that's what they require.
I think that the notion is that you can access, you need to be able to access the building, but not on all sides, unless it's beyond a certain...
It's like flipping stakes.
Size of, of structure, and this one is not. Yeah.
Great.
So, the height of the building proposed is fifty-eight feet. Maybe we can just show the rendering, so that the board can see.
So, this is... All of it.
Right.
Newport Towers is here. This is the parking lot. This would be the view as you're heading south.
What, what, the reason for the five stories instead of four?
So, the reason for the five...
Because of four?
So, the reason for the five stories is so that we can provide a rooftop amenities space. And, and on, at the top is space including a, a common kitchen, dining room, work, study, and conference room space for the tenants. And even if we just had the rooftop space and an elevator bulkhead and some lobby in there, we would need a variance for that height. The benefit...
One elevator or two in there?
One elevator.
One. So, to get the rooftop space in the back, you have to come in front of the building, or whatever, use the one elevator, walk the hallway, right? And access it that way.
Correct.
So it's odd design, but I'm just saying.
You know the height of Newport Towers next to it? Is it, is it taller than that?
Six stories, yeah. So it's lower than the adjacent building.
I, I asked the, I asked the guys at the parts, why don't you ask, I think it's you asked, why don't you go higher? You got Newport Towers at six stories.
I'm sorry, you asked who?
One of the other developers. Somebody, I think it was Linda, Linda...
Whitehead?
No, I don't know.
Why didn't they?
On some West Street Avenue project. You got the right to go higher. Not the right, you have an application to go higher because you have, you have a precedent in Newport Towers at six stories.
So, we, we think that the reason that we asked for the five stories and have more units on top is so that we can accommodate the three affordable units that we're providing down below. And, and these will be penthouse units with their own outdoor balcony area. They'll also, of course, have the ability to use the rooftop amenities space and the other amenities space throughout the building. But the height of the building is in character, in fact, lower than Newport Towers, and we thought that...
Actually, that's very nice.
Thank you.
Why would you go up to Newport Towers? I mean, take the advantage of the, the extra space, the rental.
We wanted to minimize the variance we're asking for, and we thought five stories worked well for us.
Go for the taxes. Turbo stuff for more taxes.
Parking would be a problem. Parking would be a problem if you go higher. Well, we have forty parking spaces.
Well, if you, if you built another story...
Yeah. It's, as you know, the, the parking's based on the number, on the number of dwelling units, and then it's, it's one point two. So you have one per dwelling unit, essentially, and then the two bedrooms have tandem spots?
That's correct.
That's correct, the, the two and three bedrooms, right. And, and there's a ten-space waiver or credit that's provided in this downtown area, and, and we're providing in excess of that if you, if you count those tandem spots. So we think we've got more than adequate parking for the use in the building itself. And the open space, as I said, is consistent with the variances granted previously for playhouse lofts, as well as for woodworks, where, and I, I laid it out in the, yeah, I can walk you through it, but...
Can you limit, can you limit the number of cars per apartment lease?
Well, you can, you can assign a given number of parking spaces for the vehicles, but if someone wanted to own five cars and not park them on-site...
But you can't, yeah, clearly.
We couldn't limit the number of cars they...
For that four-year. Tie it to the, one bedroom gets one, one space, two bedroom...
Right, well, what's typically done is, is what you're saying. But if you have some people who perhaps walk to the train station and don't need a parking space, and there's some extra parking spaces, someone else in the building might want an additional parking space, so...
Carbon credit.
Right.
Carbon credit. Environmental. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this matter?
Architecture review board pass on it?
Architecture, you, you were at the architecture review board?
We have not.
It looks good now, wait until they get through with this.
The planning board made a favorable recommendation to this board.
Yes, they have been...
And, yeah, and they were, they were very supportive of the application. We think that based on the aesthetics of the building, that the architecture review board will be pleased with it.
Thanks, Bill.
I don't know that they'll tell us to go another story, but...
Better off bathing, bathing in orange, and have your floor back transitioned white.
Have you seen them, listen? Thanks, Bill. Did you all come to some sort of meeting of the minds?
We did, I think. Everyone understands what the plan is. No? That's fine, that's fine.
Do we all hate it?
That's...
We understand it more.
But they understand it.
Okay.
So, a couple items we did...
Yeah.
You want a two-minute break, Row?
Yeah, we're going to have a two-minute break. Well, he's got to finish his, he's got to finish his presentation.
I don't mind, if Row, if Row has to...
And then we will do our discussion.
And your honor, we have more people who want to tell you they hate it.
Did you say, did you call me your honor?
Yes, because you're in the middle.
Oh, thank you.
So, with that being said, I think, rather than me say what I think their comments were, I, I think it might be best to get the public's comments and the records, that we can then respond.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Anybody else want to speak? Maybe, maybe somebody who hasn't had a chance?
They're representative.
So we live at nine New Street, which is up the block.
Tell us who you are for...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Chris Kanari, it's my wife Denise Kanari. We've lived at nine New Street for about five years. And I agree with everything that you've heard. I was a little indifferent to start this proceeding when I first heard the plan, didn't really realize how, how it would affect us, but I totally been swayed towards the, against, if I lived next door to this proposal, I'd be livid. It's going to ruin the aesthetic of the, of, what was it, seventeen? I heard a lawyer earlier use the term, the character of a block. I think it changes the character of the block. And it seems unnecessary. If you can build a two-family house using the existing footprint and have no variances, why do you need to expand it into this larger footprint to accomplish the same thing? So, and then, you know, we all know that two-car, even if you reduce, if you reduce this to four cars, two-family house does not mean four cars. We have three kids that are borderline at the age of driving, right? I'm going to have three more cars on that block, right? I only have room for two in my driveway. So, you know, this is just going to expand the parking problem that we already face, as you heard earlier mentioned, from Trattoria, from Tridici, from Cobblestone. Everybody parks on our block, and it's a nightmare.
How many units you have in your house?
Just one. So, that's the, oh, sorry, that's the other thing I wanted to mention. So, I understand there's four two-family houses on the block now. We chose our block because it's a dead-end street, and it is mostly single-family homes. If you're granting a variance here to expand this, I mean, are other people going to do the same thing? What happens in the future? I mean, we're setting a precedent, right?
Could the police give you residential parking only on your street?
So, I've never investigated it, John? I don't know if you have looked into it?
No, and we should have permits because it gets so bad.
Well, why don't you go after it?
You know what? One of the other...
Yeah, I didn't realize that was...
Neighborhood Association.
One of the other town meetings when they were...
Excuse me, if you want to be on the record, you're...
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah. When they, I'm sorry, when they wanted to build a church up on Anderson Hill Road, and they got the electronic device that measured how many cars went by, I spoke at that meeting, and I said, you know, I'm not against a church. I love Jesus, I have no problem with it, you know? But I said, you know, it's crazy, the traffic.
He's my cousin.
And they were kind of, you know, like poo-pooing me and saying, oh, well, it's not that bad. Like, you know, you try to get out of New Street...
That's right.
Thousands of people are trying to get to Pepsi, and thousands of students are trying to get to SUNY Purchase. And then, at the end of the day, thousands of people who work in White Plains who live in Fairfield County are using Anderson Hill Road as a cut-through, and I can't get out of my driveway without, you know? So, it is a nightmare. We should have parking. We should have parking stickers on our street so that, but that was the aha moment for me a few years back when we had a big snowstorm. And I see seven cars, and it's a week later, and they still have the snow on them? And I, one of the policemen, they use the bathroom at the firehouse, so we're, you know, we're on very good terms with the police. This car, this car, this car, and what do you hear? They don't live here, they don't live here, they live in another town, you know, they tell me, you know? And we know what they're doing.
We have the same problem with West Harrison Lake Street.
Yeah.
Cuts through to White Plains.
Yeah.
But the, very people know New Street was built as a street with a certain kind of character.
Yes.
And that's why the houses, lots are the same.
Exactly.
And that in itself is defendable as a, it would change the character of the neighborhood if you go to multifamily.
And the two families always worked the way it was, or people living there, right? I mean, does every two-family have to be giant? No, it could be the way it is. They have no problem renting, right? And we are always talking about affordability of Harrison, right? Well, once they double the size of this, is the other, is this going to be an affordable unit, the second unit? No, it's going to be $10,000 a month. The house behind, I can tell you for a fact, the house behind the firehouse was renting for $7,500 because I was friends with the renters. Pepsi was paying. So, this is a great invest, again, it's a great investment for them at the backs of the other two neighbors. It's just a moneymaker, you know? So, it doesn't really help anyone else.
Thank you.
John Jurgens.
Thank you, John. Okay, want to take a break? Sure. 10-minute break? No, make it five minutes.
Five minutes.
10 minutes, Rose, five? 10?
Wow.
Wow, Rose. Rose, you got candy?
Here, you want one?
I love one. Thank you.
Holy candle, this car goes cold.
These are good, I love them.
No, no, I wouldn't either. Oh, no, I'm married.
Close the channel.
Yeah, it's my boy, he knows how to work.
People expect it. I said, it's like, once you, I told the client, you just start a business, you're putting it in a place you...
Go ahead and drag work around, circle it, it doesn't belong.
The neighborhood is designed as a working neighborhood.
It's like a country neighborhood. You go through the street, you feel like you're in the country. The Brecker houses...
You know, it's all power. They're super deep.
Yeah, and the lots are deep.
290, 300 feet. Because they all have home garden.
All diet?
Yeah, absolutely, garden real bad. It's really interesting.
I like our...
Yeah.
Anybody, you know, if we grant the good plans, like, eventually, the whole freaking block's going to turn.
Well, I'm not inclined on that air conditioning thing.
Neither am I. The six of them, the six, I'm not...
Really?
What? They have three acres, and they're asking for like a 50% variance for six acres.
You can put it anywhere in that house. You can put a conduit underneath the thing, yeah, I think. Now, you know who would know? The guy at the end.
Here's our architect. Six, that's a lot of...
It's not one.
They're sipping the ozone out themselves.
I've stayed in hotels that are smaller than that. Philly, the hotel's in Maine.
Nice.
Yeah.
The other house is over 150 feet away from the property.
That's more like it.
Here's the thing with that, the pool, the variance bracket earlier in the year, we thought that was a, an R35. It makes the variances a lot more difficult.
Yeah, but I don't think, that's not what it affected, I would just say. I don't think, my opinion.
It's just a layout of the, you know, the slope of the lot, yeah. They can't have a pool anywhere else besides there.
Yeah, I rarely reference the 75, 75, I don't know, because I look at that crowd and go, I'm thinking, I was against it, but it was crowded, all sorts of shit.
Yeah.
Going past it, so.
Going past it, but it's back before us again.
I know.
So, I'm really, I think I voted for it for the first time, but I'm thinking about...
If I was a neighbor, even though the neighbor has, it's the side of a house plus a solid fence. She can't see.
How's it legal? I wonder if it's legal, legal or something in that meeting? It's legal, it's not, I mean, legally, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, it's a residential meeting, why are they writing any...
Special permit.
They actually got a special permit for me.
For daycare, for Harrison.
Okay.
You can have a daycare if you want. I saw, we once had a case here where Montessori...
Yeah.
Wanted to run a Montessori school at a low level, basement, but it was a slope. Building, you have medical rooms over there.
Okay, well, that makes you...
So, West Side was, it was, it made sense because you dropped the kid off and they right up hill.
Yeah.
And they had, they evidently got a special permit, a special one.
I still have summer sleep schedule, I'm like back at school, so falling asleep. I wake up at 6:30.
That's right, yeah.
So, I'm getting...
Usually, yeah, let's say, whoever has one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How old is that guy?
I don't know, whatever.
Are you the oldest?
He's six times, just turned two.
So, you got category.
Yes, so he's got, yeah, he's older yet.
You skilled that 100% and still gets...
I'm 100%.
Oh, you are?
I was going to say, he's older.
I thought you were having trouble, like...
No, I don't know, I don't know, my expectation is a bit...
Right.
I'm 100% happy.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, given the height, these, I don't even, I don't know if you're reading.
I'm glad it worked. I'm glad it worked.
I should have worn it, really, I would have been great.
I have drop that every night. Yeah, it's harder and harder.
Have your attention, please. At this stage, what we do is, we discuss each case individually without any participant. Steve?
We, I think, we're going to...
Go ahead, do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's late, I will try to be brief. I just, I think there still may be a little bit of misconception as to what's permitted versus not permitted, what the nature of the variance is, what the nature of the analysis is that you, the board, have to undertake. And so, I just want to reiterate again, and there were some, hopefully, we cleared it up in the lobby, but there was some confusion where some thought this was a one-family house being converted to a two, and that that was setting a precedent. That's not the case. This is a two-family house now. It's getting larger, but the use is going to remain as a two-family house. That was the case back in June, that's the case now, albeit the amount of increase is smaller than what was proposed before, the amount of bedrooms changing is smaller than what was proposed before. The house itself, the physical building that's being proposed, could be constructed as of right as a single-family house on the property. And so, to argue that it's changing the aesthetic or character of the neighborhood is to argue that what the zoning ordinance allows to be built would inherently change the character of the neighborhood, which, from where I sit, seems to not particularly track logically. I would also know, and I think the...
I think the question, the question changes the character of the neighborhood because now you're adding another two-family house, a couple of other two-family houses.
No, no, so, again, this is a two-family house now.
Okay, go on.
We're adding essentially two bedrooms, one bedroom to each unit. It's a little more complicated than that, obviously, in how it's being laid out, but at the end of the day, it's a net increase of two bedrooms, right? As you noted, I believe in June, the parking we're proposing could be put on the property right now. And again, we're happy to reduce it from six to four if the feeling is that this is too much parking. As we just heard, though, from the neighbors, there's a concern that four spaces is not enough parking.
You're six, don't you?
We do, but there, I've heard complaints that six is too much, and I've heard complaints that four is not enough. And we are happy to do either. We're happy to do pervious pavers, we're happy to look at reconfiguring the orientation of the parking towards the rear, which would, due to the width of the lot, require only four spaces. But we're willing to be flexible and try and reorient or shrink the parking as the board may deem preferable. But we are proposing landscaping along the property line that abuts the parking, we are proposing landscaping along the entirety of the house, both the existing area and the proposed expansion. And the house, as, I am just not sure if it was clear, the house expansion will not be any closer to the property at 17 New Street than the existing garage. In fact, it's going to be further from the side lot line and further from the 17 New Street house. So, I wanted to clarify those points, I wanted to emphasize that, and really just point out to the board that a lot of this really is permitted when it comes to the aesthetic, the size, the design, the location of parking, the amount of parking, all permitted by zoning. So, with that, if you have any questions for us, if you have suggestions you'd like us to hear or feedback you'd like us to take in, we'd be more than happy to look at that.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Steven?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So, it sounds like you, it sounds like you really don't need variances.
No, thank you, because it's a non-conforming, Q family, it's a single-family zone.
It's a non-conforming.
Yeah.
Any questions?
So, it's a renewal of the...
The use exists, the use has existed since, I think, 1930, but because, the way the code is written, because the building that contains the non-conforming use is getting larger, if we were to increase it by one square foot, it would trigger an area variance with your board. So, what we're proposing is in line with what the code allows structurally, but it's a non-conforming use.
You're doubling the size of the non-conforming use, that's what you're doing.
To an extent.
You are.
Yeah.
He's doubling.
It's more than that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Steve?
That's why we did it outside.
May I?
All right, thank you.
Just, again, it's all semantics. He says, oh, I'm just adding two bedrooms.
You have to state your name.
John Jurgens. He's saying, oh, I'm just adding two bedrooms. You're doubling the size of the house. Are we clear on that? Doubling the size of it. He's just, I'm sorry, he's doubling the size of the house, and he says, well, I'm just adding two bedrooms. You're doubling, that's what, we went to the back, we all looked, did we all look at it, guys? And he made it crystal clear, it's double now, and that's not allowed. It's doubling, it's, you know, you can omit things and sugarcoat things, but he's doubling this, he wants to double it. And the last point...
He's trying to say he wants to double it.
He's absolutely, your honor. The other thing that he wants to say...
You wanted me to say that?
Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to add, I've got another one of my neighbors who's also against it, yes, he is against, he's against it.
You want to come up and speak to it?
No, sir.
But you are against it.
No, your honor, yes, I am.
Please, don't forget the...
He's against it, so he's against it.
Consideration because he's not coming up to the microphone. If he comes to the microphone, anything anybody says in the audience is not considered.
Do you want to come up and just say, no, you're against it?
No.
Okay. The other point that we were making back there is, again, we have Purchase College, we have Manhattanville College, love to rent the two-family house to all the students there, and see how many cars you get, you know, you know what I'm saying? That's another, another point. We have, we've had students on our street illegally renting New York Medical College, Manhattanville College, SUNY Purchase, you have more cars. So, you've got a two-family house that's bigger, they may move out one day and decide, I'm going to keep the house, but I'm going to rent it to college students, and they're all roommates. Try to get rid of them when they're roommates, and there's six cars on the street. You can't, you cannot get rid of roommates when there's six of them. There's nothing illegal about that, and there'll be more cars on the street. But I can tell you, in my 25 years on that street, I've met all those college students who are renting rooms on our street and paying cash, and it's just more cars. It's very upsetting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? All right, we're going to, we close the part where everybody gets to present their case, and the board now will discuss each case individually, and you'll get an idea of what direction we're going in as far as approvals or denials. So, there's no participation by the audience, so I'd appreciate it very much if you'd just sit and listen and enjoy, relax a little, okay? Michael, you want to start with calendar item Z22029, Allison at Tenacio?
Yes, okay, so, I'm, I would be against this application. I believe it's two large reverberations. They're basically asking for, it was a 33-foot variance, which was huge, and it's not just one air-conditioning condenser, it's six. I think we would set a very bad precedent. I think they have three acres, I'm sure they can move it someplace else, and so, I would be against it.
Steve?
Six is just gross. I mean, they have six zones, at least six zones, and each of those condenses can be divided into a couple of zones, is ridiculous.
Ernie?
I agree with Steve. It could be, it could be reconfigured.
I don't have a problem with it, because I think the only people who are suffering are the owners at Denazio, so I'm in favor of it. Tom?
I'm opposed.
Billy?
I'm opposed.
I'm in favor of it. I just, I think that there was existing units there, they're adding a few, the other house is almost 200 feet away, or maybe further, I don't think anyone's going to be affected.
I agree.
Disapprove.
Can I get a motion to, anybody else want to add anything to that? Can I get a motion to close calendar item 20, or Z22029 and prepare findings?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Calendar item Z22030, Rogirio Lobo. This is a request for a 2.1-foot variance. I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
Ernie?
No problem. I have a problem with this now.
No issue. Billy?
No problem.
Can I get a motion to close calendar item Z22030?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Calendar item Z22031 is adjourned. Calendar item Z22032, Gloria Fernal and Allison Gennasi. I think, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I don't think it's a big deal, the, the fact of the matter is, the error was made by the building department. The pool is there because the building department made a mistake.
The, the pool's not there.
It's not there yet.
It's not in yet.
They caught it. We're going to give them a miss.
Uh, I'm still in favor of it, anyway. I don't think it's a big deal. Tom?
I'd like to hear the position of my fellow board members, I'm really on the fence on this one.
That's not a joke.
Billy? I'll oppose to it, I think, I think we're squeezing it, I don't remember how I voted originally, but, um, I just think you're squeezing it in, I think it affects.
I'll give the findings in your package.
The old one?
Did I vote it?
No, I don't, I don't need to know. I think it affects the neighbor to the left tremendously, um, in, in a variety of ways.
You're against it.
I'm opposed.
Tom?
Um, I don't know, we've, we've granted these before, I think the bigger issue is really this proximity from the side street, which doesn't really affect anybody on that side, if I recall correctly.
Well, the ones we, we approved were on the side street.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one is.
This is, so.
It's not on the side of the street. But if it's a neighbor's house.
So, oh, I'll just hit this for a second. So they're going to five-foot rear yard, right?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five-foot variance because of the street. Is that correct?
Yeah.
From the street front, so that, that I have no, I don't have any issue with that street front. Because, you know, the, the way, you know, you're penalized for having a corner lot, that's really what it boils down to. And I don't think that that, that's, I don't think that really affects anybody coming in on the street side, and it's only five foot on the back, so I, I'm, I don't have a problem with this.
Ernie?
Well, like everybody said, we had granted it before, and I don't think the change that's proposed here is going to impact it significantly, so I'm okay with it.
Downpour it because the, uh, up-the-hill lot is barricaded by a blank side of a home plus a, uh, five or six or seven-foot, uh, solid fence to make any kind of intrusion very difficult. The only thing I, I request is the refurbishment of the plantings that were put in last time that we requested. Half of them are dead.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I think I'm, I'm against this, because, um, when this originally came before us, we, we, we were given the impression it was, um, an R35 district is actually an R130 district, which makes the, uh, the size of the variance is now greater, um, so they're requesting a 35-foot variance, I mean, to me, that's just a bit too much, and, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote against this.
You're, you're not in favor?
I'm not in favor.
So that's four to three. Can I get a motion to close calendar item?
Tom didn't.
Huh?
Tom didn't lay in there.
I'm sorry?
Tom didn't.
Yeah, he did.
Now, after listening to the comments of my fellow zoning board members, and influenced by the neighbor opposition, I'm going to oppose the application.
That's four to three.
Four to three, so it passes.
All right. Can I get a motion to close calendar item Z22032 and prepare findings? With screening? With a screening plan?
No, there's a screening plan that they put in before, but half of them died. She replaced that.
All right, so you can, you can, you can request it on this one, you want a screening plan? Okay. With a screening plan. Can I get a motion to close it, please?
I'll make a motion, close.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Calendar item Z22033. Who wants to start? Let me start, the stairs are already there. You're going to force them to take them out? Has no impact on anybody. I have no issue with it. Billy?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. You have no issue with it, it's, there was improvements there to begin with.
I think so, too.
I have no issue on this.
I think it was a great revelation tonight, in that it's man-made, there's a spill-off of a little can of grease. So, so it's not going to interfere with flooding or anything like that, it's all for it.
I have no issue with this.
Okay, can I get a motion to close calendar item Z22033 and prepare findings?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, you all ready now?
Want to do the last one first?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Calendar item Z22035, Al Combs. I'll start with that, I think it's a good project. I'm in favor of it.
I'm not opposed.
Billy?
Not opposed.
Approved.
I'm okay.
Steve?
Great.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it, yeah.
Can I get a motion to close calendar item Z22035 and prepare findings?
I'll make a motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed. Done. Calendar item Z22034, Gino and Maria Vitreni. This is a tough one. So I'm going to ask Ernie to do it first. I never pick on you.
You always pick on me.
I know.
You know what, I'm going to defer.
I'll, I'll start.
Somebody.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed to it.
You're opposed to it?
You speak up, please.
We're increasing a non-conformity, we're increasing the use of a non-conformity, and in a sense, you're, you're helping to rezone the neighborhood eventually down the road, because the other four houses are going to come looking to do the same thing. And if it's, yeah, I'm not opposed to the size of it, if it's a single-family house, they can do what they want, but, well, I think one of our mandates is to not increase non-conformities. And, and that's what we would be doing, so, I'm opposed.
Tom?
So, yeah.